Okay, you're good.
Good evening.
All right, well, I'll officially call the meeting to order. A couple of announcements. First, there's a public hearing to consider a local law amending the local landmark chapter of the village code, and that's scheduled for Monday, June 1st at 7:00 PM in Village Hall. Mary Ann, did you want to give a little bit about the background on that one?
Yeah. It was, I guess, I was surprised. It was January 2018. I went back to look that we enacted the local landmark law. And what this law would do is make sure that anybody who buys a property that has a local landmark on it would be aware that it's there. Because presumably, I should point out that there's no local landmarks have yet been designated, and nobody's applied for local landmark status. But let's say somebody has, presumably they're getting some benefit for it or whatever. But anyway, and the intention was it would continue to bind future owners of the property. So what this does is adds a provision. I'll read it in short. A certified copy of the resolution designating a site building structure mark or object as a local landmark shall be recorded in the office of the clerk of Westchester County and indexed against the property on which the local landmark is located, so that anybody who buys the property in the future would know about the local landmark designation. They're bound by it, presumably, but this would put them on notice and certainly make any question about whether they're bound by it. It would be resolved because it's filed with the county clerk.
Very good. So I'll make a motion to have the public hearing on Monday, June 1st at 7:00 PM in Village Hall, I guess, actually online. But if you have a second?
Second.
Paul and Federer?
Hi.
All right. Next, an update on a Memorial Day ceremony. Since obviously we can't have public gatherings, never mind large public gatherings, our Memorial Day ceremony will be very abbreviated this year. We're going to have a short ceremony to kind of acknowledge the importance of the day, and of course, remember the fallen. But, you know, we're not going to have our usual speeches and that sort of thing. It's going to be a very brief ceremony. That will be broadcast live, so if anybody wants to tune in, make sure we get that on the website and send an email blast out. But, you know, while we can't have our traditional, or we were actually hoping for an enhanced Memorial Day ceremony and enhanced parade this year, and we had a lot of things in the works that unfortunately had to be canceled with so many other things this year, but we did feel that it was very important to still have some ceremony on that day, because it's such a solemn and important day. One other thing before we get to the check is I've gotten several emails this week about people's lack of use of masks on places like the Aqueduct. I understand when people are outside, and there are places, like to me, the Irvington Woods, where you can typically be able to social distance, you know, more than six feet or six feet or more from your neighbor. But the Aqueduct is really not one of those places. That's the place I've gotten the most complaints about, because there are parts where it's so narrow, there's parts when you're, you know, walking and there's two of you, and there's two people jogging, and a bite comes, and you're going to have to be within six feet of each other, or you're going to fall off the side. So if you're on the Aqueduct, if you're on Main Street, please have a mask with you, even if it's, you know, kind of down a little bit, and you have to pull it up when you get near people. I understand it's not comfortable if you're exercising to always have a mask on, but we ask you to try to use common sense. And, you know, if you're in a heavily populated area, we request that you continue to wear your mask.
Hey, Brian?
Yes?
On that topic, I just wanted to make mention that I was kind of startled on Saturday, I think it was Saturday, I can't remember if it was Saturday or Sunday now, but going up through to Cyrus Field Road, and the Irvington Woods parking lot was jammed, and it was overflowing into the informal parking area for the gun range, rifle, for the shooting range. And what I wanted to point out was, the vast majority of people did not even have masks on, you know, and it was very startling to me, because, you know, you, although out in the woods, I can see the rationale of not wearing it, but when you're in the parking lot, and people are walking back and forth and not paying attention to you, or whatever else, it doesn't seem like the safest outcome.
Yeah. No, I mean, again, it's kind of common sense. Like, if you're in the middle of the woods, and there's no one around, feel free to, you know, take your mask down, but you should always have one with you. When you're interacting with people, you should always have it. So I think that's good common sense. I think that also brings up another point about unleashed dogs. We've had, again, bad incidents with people, other dogs, children, being, you know, having bad encounters with unleashed dogs. The law is very clear. You have to have your dog on leash, whether in the Irvington Woods, whether you're on Main Street, all dogs have to be leashed. And it doesn't matter if your dog is the nicest dog since Snoopy, it has to be on a leash. I know it's not always great for, you know, it's not the happiest dog, that they have to be unleashed in the woods, but that's the rules. And it's because, you know, not all dogs are Snoopy. Some dogs are mean. Some dogs are only mean when they see a certain thing. We just can't have that. We have upped enforcement. We're going to be having undercover or in non-uniformed police officers in the woods, and there's not going to be any warnings. I don't care if you've lived here for 1,000 years and your name's Rip Van Winkle, you're going to be getting a ticket. This is going on for years and years and years. And I understand a lot of my friends are like, like, once I get to the woods, I take my dog off leash. And that's great, and so you're the woman who gets attacked by three dogs. And, you know, two of them, I'm sure, were the friendliest dogs ever. So just don't do it anymore. You're going to get a ticket, and it's not going to be pleasant, and no one, the judge, myself, no one's going to have a, you know, a, an ear that's going to at all say, geez, I understand, you know, I'm sorry, dogs have to be unleashed. But I've obviously gotten off topic now. Let's go back to the mundane. We did-
Brian, can I just add Sina Hudson to the list of places where masks should be worn at all times, and dogs probably not brought in?
Yeah. Not, I mean, the Sina Hudson rule is also very simple. When Sina Hudson donated the park, they said, no dogs. So the rule is, no dogs. So even if you have a friendly dog, and if you have found three leashes, they cannot go into Sina Hudson Park. That goes for bicycles. That goes for recumbent bicycles. It goes for tricycles. It goes for scooters. If it has wheels, you can't use it. It's too narrow, and right now, it's way too crowded. So no wheels, no dogs, and masks. And walk in the right direction. It's very simple, really.
And no smoking. No smoking.
Hardest smoke with a mask on, so. Anyway.
I don't know how they do it, but-
To checks over 25,000. We had one to buy or afford. It was for a police hybrid SUV. It came out of the capital fund, and it was $36,319. That was all I had for announcements. I don't know if anyone else wants to jump up on their high horse like I did, but otherwise, we'll move on. All right. Next, correspondence. It actually all applies to our public hearing, so I'm going to hold over the correspondence until we get to the public hearing. Next up is public comment for anything that's not on the agenda. So if there's a topic here that isn't on the agenda, feel free to raise your hand, and virtually raise your hands, and Larry will call on you. There will, of course, be another opportunity to speak at the end, and there's also the public comment coming up. All right. Doesn't look like anyone's raising their hand. Give me extra a minute to figure it out if you have to. There's one. Chat Kerr.
Hello, Chat. Hi. I think I'm unmuted. I just have a question about the landmark amendment law, and I know there's going to be a public hearing in a couple of weeks, but with this change, would it, would it mean that if a land, if an owner applies for and gets landmark, local landmark status for their property, not only a future owner, but that current owner couldn't change their mind and undo it?
Yeah, well, you know, there is a provision in the landmark law. Let me get it in front of me. I don't remember off the top of my head, but I remember you could, you could undo No, I take, I take that back. But I suppose if you were designated a landmark and you wanted to get undesignated, you could go to the board of trustees and ask them to do it. I mean, it's in their power. They created it. But, and I guess a future landowner would have to do the same thing. Is that the answer, Chat?
Yeah, I guess, I guess, well, here's my question. I had looked at local landmark law. I had understood it that you couldn't make something a landmark without the current landowner approving.
Exactly.
And although it wasn't directly addressed, it suggested to me that if it became landmark, a landmark owner for the same rationale could go to the board later on and ask that it be undone, and it could potentially-
You know what, Chat? Let me, let me get the water in front of me. You know what? I was just reading the section that I corrected, not the whole law. I actually do remember something.
Well, I don't want to sidetrack everybody on this. I just, Mary Ann, you and I can perhaps have a conversation about this. I just, I just, I read-
No, you may as well answer. I just found the answer.
Okay.
The Board of, and it's also in the same chapter, local landmark, rescission. The Board of Trustees may rescind any designation of a local landmark using the same procedures for local landmark designation.
So my question is, would that also apply for future owners as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's, so if somebody else buys the property, they have a designated local landmark on their property, they can file to rescind the designation, yes. There's nothing in that language that limits it to the person who first got it designated.
Okay, answers my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other public comment? Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone on the board have a question on the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda if I can have a second. All in favor? Next up is continuation of the public hearing to consider a local law amending the zoning code to create the North Broadway Mixed Use District. Obviously, we put this, this, this public hearing on pause with New York State. Today, what we'd like to do, first, I'll say right away, we're not voting on it today. We're probably not voting on it, you know, for a while. But we thought it was important to get the conversation going again, start addressing any new issues. I know we just had someone send a letter that they just found out about it again. So we feel the more publicity we can give it, you know, and the more we can discuss the issue, the better for everybody. So, you know, we're not voting tonight. We don't expect to vote in the, in the near term, but we thought it'd be good to update where we are, and then hear new concerns from all of you. So tonight's really, again, it's more of a listening exercise for us. We don't expect to have, you know, answers and solutions to everything you bring up, but, you know, we can continue to address issues only when we hear of them, so that's the purpose of tonight.
Mary Ann, would you be able to-
Yeah.
Yeah, go through the, go through the changes, yeah?
Yeah. I thought I had done this before, but maybe not. You know what? I think it was just in a work session. But in any event, there's, there's a few changes, none of them are too big. One is, the, the previous draft had a minimum lot width of 250, minimum lot, you know, length of 250, and a minimum lot size of 80,000. Well, it doesn't really make any sense, because the 250 didn't make sense. And also, there are a couple lots there that aren't 80,000 square feet, so it was changed to minimum lot size. No new lot may be created in the North Broadway Mixed Use District unless it has an area of at least 80,000 square feet. That's one change. Then, another change was on the, on the required yards. The previous draft had it, the, the front yard remains at 75 feet, the side at 50, and the rear at 50. But if it adjoins a one-family district, it's got to be 75 feet in the side, 75 feet in the rear, so 75 feet on all sides. That's a change, from the 50 to the 75. Then, on the calculation of the height of the building, the previous draft read, underground parking shall not be included in the calculation of height, which, which isn't exactly right, because if, if, if part of the underground parking is above ground, that should be counted. So right now, the definition of height reads from ground up, so that will continue to be the definition of height. But it says the underground parking shall not be included in the number of stories. So if there's a three-story limit, your underground parking doesn't include it, get included in the stories. Height will be measured the same way it always is. Getting on a big change, just a clarification. Then this is new. There was a maximum building length was added, that no building shall exceed a length of 225 feet at grade. This limitation shall not apply to covered walkways, porticoes, or similar structures connecting buildings, nor shall it apply to driveways or parking lots. So that if you had two buildings connected by a covered walkway, that wouldn't be one building. That, that, you might have a 175-foot building and a 175-foot building connected by a walkway, and then that walkway doesn't count. This, I think, responds to one of the, one of the comments in, in, in one of the letters from a lot of the neighbors, was that you can have a building as big as a football field, as wide as a football field. We can't, because it can't be wider than 225 feet. And we settled on that number because it, that's right now, that's the size of, roughly the size of the, of the Abbott House, and that seems to be a reasonable limit. We didn't want to make any of the buildings non-conforming. There's one other set of changes. This, this section was added, I'll read it. "Any outdoor activities conducted by any permitted use in the North Broadway Mixed Use District must comply with the following restrictions. A, no outdoor activity shall take place within a required setback. No amplified music or amplified sounds are permitted outdoors. And no outdoor activity shall take place before 9:00 AM any day of the week, or nor after 9:00 PM on Sunday through Thursday, and 10:00 PM on Friday, Saturday, and the night before a federal holiday." Oh, and one other thing. So on the adverse traffic impacts, there was a listing. It says the following shall be deemed a significant adverse traffic impact. And people came, well, what about this, what about that? Well, you know what we did was, I added the language, at a minimum, the following shall be deemed a significant adverse traffic impact. So there could be a significant traffic impact that doesn't, doesn't meet one of those, you know, quantifiable, quantifiable items that are included in the law. And that's it.
Wrong unmute button. Great, but I think that's a good update. What I'll do is I'll probably open it up to the public since they're here, and then if we don't hear from the authors of the letters, we can cover those at the end. But again, you know, we really wanted to hear what everyone has to say after having a nice extended break to think about this some more, you know, and we're all ears. So if you figure out how to, you know, raise your hand, go ahead and do that. If you can't figure out how to raise your hand, you can actually send a chat and say you would like to speak, and we can figure that out as well, so.
On another note, just so, just so you know, we do have a couple of people who are call-in, phone-only, I assume, and if you are looking to raise your hand, I believe you can hit star nine, and that'll raise your hand, if you're just a phone-only, so.
Taylor Palmer. This is, one, one advantage of all of this is that we get to see people's names right away, so. Looks like Taylor Palmer has their hen raised first, so.
All right, we should be unmuted. Good evening.
All right, so, now, I understand, I know you submitted a letter, and you, you want to be able to display parts of it, is that-
Indeed, thank you, Larry. If I may, again, Taylor Palmer with Cuddy and Federer. We hope to be able, just to present on the screen, we have David Smith, our planner, and Susan Janchill are, also our planner, who have our visuals that were submitted in our, our submission this afternoon, and just, we want to sort of consolidate our time into a brief presentation for the benefit of the-
Hold on one second. Sorry about that. I just promoted, no, I promoted Taylor. I think you muted again. There you go. But let me just, let me just promote you as panelists. It's just temporary, while you're presenting what you need to present, and then we'll move on to the rest of the public.
Thank you. Now I don't need to say I'm wearing a tie.
There you go.
You're free not to believe me.
Very impressive.
And Susan as well, right? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
I'm guessing-
While they're loading to try and consolidate on, on time, I know Dave and Susan are on the line and joining me this evening. We do want to thank you, Mayor Smith, and members of the board. It's really, really great to see you all tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to comment during this continued public hearing. Susan's going to put up on the screen some images that Dave Smith's going to review with us. As you know, we're here on behalf of the State of Stanley Rubensall, the owners of the Maxon property, 76 North Broadway, commonly referred to as the Maxon property. As I mentioned, I'm doing, I'm joined by David and Rubensall, who was the representative of the owner, and David Smith and Susan Janchill are planners. Again, we want to thank you for coordinating this Zoom meeting in these interesting times. My two-month-old son may join us. He likes these night meetings as well, and likes to contribute his public comments as I'm speaking. For the record, our planning consultant did submit a letter to the board this evening, inclusive of this image on the screen, which, again, David Smith will be reviewing specifically. And really, it's involving the specific new inclusion of impacts. As far as setbacks are concerned, that will add additional difficulties of development on the site. Understanding this is a public comment period, at this point, I am refer over to David Smith, and then Susan Janchill is controlling the screen here. But ultimately, what we're here to show to you tonight is that these new 75-foot setbacks is proposed specifically to a residential district, which is 50% greater than what this board, this board originally proposed, has no discernible benefits to, to the limited residential properties on Strawberry Lane as compared to the existing zoning requirements. And then it includes a 50-foot setback, which is 50% larger as it stands from the existing zoning. So this board spent a very significant amount of time over the last year reviewing screening requirements and others, which are deliverables that Dave will present to you, show. And with that limited background, I am going to turn it over to Dave Smith to go through, you know, summarize some of the points of our letter. But really, we've looked at this as many ways as possible. We tried to go up to the north, which is the top of the screen, as you see it. There's existing encumbrances, whether it's the 250-foot buffer that is for North Broadway, there's a utility easement that serves the Rabies property, and others potentially on up Strawberry Lane, and then you're, you have the existing 50-foot setback. So we're exceptionally encumbered. And just with that, all we're asking this board is to consider keeping the 50-foot setback as proposed, again, given all of the other constraints. So that, I'll turn it over to Dave Smith. And again, I really appreciate the opportunity this night, tonight, to be with all of you.
Thank you. For the record, Dave Smith, principal with planning and development advisors, planners for the State of Stanley Rubensall. As you know, we've been working with the state and with the village over the past almost a year now on evaluating the proposed zoning for North Broadway. And the North Broadway zoning, as you know, has its roots in the most recently updated comprehensive plan. In fact, that, that the reason for the comprehensive plan update was really part of it, the main reason was to evaluate how these select properties may be redeveloped for future use. So as Taylor mentioned, I think one of the significant issues that we have with the revisions, the proposed revisions, is the inclusion of the 75-foot setback along the property lines. What Susan has shown in the graphic on the screen includes the, the significant buffer along Broadway, which it was one of the criteria for, within the comprehensive plan update, preserving that corridor, the view of that corridor. And going back to some of our initial presentations, we've indicated and shown graphically, we've had some of these graphics included with the, with most recent submission, about how the visual impact can be effectively mitigated from Broadway corridor. There we go. So do you have SK2? There we go. So again, that, that shows the conceptual building program, its relationship to the Broadway corridor, and the intervening topography and vegetation that affect screens, development program from the corridor and preserves that view. So if we can go back to SK7, Susan. So I think what struck me most about, from a land use planning standpoint, is that the, the applicant here, or Rubensall, have gone through a fairly extensive exercise at a conceptual level that identifies contemporary building programs on the site. And essentially, as the setbacks are currently laid out with the 50-foot setback and the Broadway buffer, you have approximately 68% of the site encumbered with setbacks, which significantly reduces flexibility in design. Applying the 75-foot setback requirement means we've got almost 80% of the site that's encumbered with, with setbacks, and significantly reduces and restricts flexibility in design to accommodate contemporary uses. And we've, in our most recent memo, we provided all the background that we provided to the village relative to those different types of uses, and size requirements, FARs, coverage, in an effort to help illustrate how zoning could be applied to the site and development could be allowed to occur. That's consistent with the design approach identified in the comprehensive plan. The, the other issue that was raised and discussed earlier this year, Susan, could you go to SK3? So SK3 was a graphic that was presented earlier this year. It showed how there were concerns with respect to buffering along Strawberry Lane. And while we don't have a, a plan, a specific plan prepared, we did illustrate how the relationship of buildings along Strawberry Lane in relation to the site, and then how vegetation and landscaping, permitting could be accommodated within portions of the Maxon property site. So we feel that there is ample opportunity to screen proposed development. Obviously, at the time that an application is submitted, it will be reviewed in detail as part of site plan. But here, at least conceptual, we think that we've been able to address the potential visual impacts, understanding also that what we're showing right now is where the existing curb cut is to the Maxon property. That could be shifted further to the west to create more of a seamless buffer along the extent of the Strawberry Lane property. So we understand that this is a, an ongoing process, an ongoing dialogue with the public, with your board. And one of the things that my client suggested is that if the village is going to entertain a 75-foot upper along Strawberry Lane, then they're respectfully requesting that perhaps that the setback along the Broadway corridor, instead of being 250 feet, be revised to 200 feet. And again, that frees up some more of the site to allow for that flexibility of design, and allow for a compatible development within the confines of the site. So that quickly goes through the contents of the memo that we had submitted. There are additional graphics which are provided as part of the memo report prepared by Susan Janchill. I'll ask Taylor if there's anything else that takes, that we need to cover before I turn it back to you.
Thank you, David. Now, Susan, if you could just quickly go to SK5 and 6, just for the benefit of the board. We did illustrate further the existing requirements in the code to show that the certain views, you see View A and View B on your screen as you come up in a easterly direction on Strawberry Lane towards the residential properties. in a easterly direction on Strawberry Lane towards the residential properties visually, what that screening would look like along the corridor to show again, the 50-foot setback or 75, you know, there's no discernible change as far as what would be visualized. Susan can highlight the gray box is showing a potential development program listed on our site plans, again, showing screening in the area as proposed. And the code is what is really going to make the difference from a potential visual avenue. So again, we're asking the board, consider maintaining the 50-foot as proposed, which again is 50% greater than existing conditions and the existing code, meaning the existing zoning today and/or, as David mentioned, some other alternative with the Broadway frontage to again, make it economically viable and really a good development on the site without overly constraining the site. So again, that's, we just wanted to make sure that the board knew we've, we've taken a heavy look at this to ensure that, you know, again, that the 50 feet and 75 feet, it's not about size mattering in this case. 75 feet, just because it's bigger, doesn't create a better solution. The screening that the board already included in the law is really what is the driving force here. So we look forward to continuing our discussions and certainly being available to the board at a future work session if there are any questions. Or again, of course, tonight, if the questions come up here.
Thank you. That was appreciated visuals. Anybody from the board have anything or?
I have one quick question that perhaps Susan or Taylor could help with. And that is, in those draft site plans, you know, straw man site plans, where would be the access to the parking? I wasn't sure if I could actually read up-to-date pavement indicators to show where access might be envisioned on, just conceptually.
Susan, I'll go ahead and let you respond on this one, just because you're pulling up the site plan here.
All right, wait. Okay, I was sorry, I was muted. Are you asking Mark where the access to underground parking would be? Yes. Well, it would probably be either over here or over here. We really didn't work that out to that level of detail, but it would be at the lower level because most of the underground parking probably would happen below grade here. It could also happen right around here as well. We just really didn't work it out to that level, but it's possible to do it.
Yeah, I was thinking it was going to be further down toward the southwest corner because of the grade going up, upslope to that back mansion house.
It could be right here, definitely.
So one other question is, what is, what in the building program is setting that notch in the?
This notch or this notch?
That notch.
If it's a assisted living or any sort of residential, you want to maximize the windows. So if you have a big block like this, you lose the centerpiece for windows. So that was just, really just a, a conceptual look at that. And this is actually the 60-foot wide, which is probably what it would be. So this might even be drawn a little bit too wide in this, but we couldn't. If we were going to be fussy about it, we could make it more workout, but it would work out like this.
The idea being the box, the box design, you know, just a square on the lot, which would, would really be the resultant design, if you were to try and maximize square footage, wouldn't be a good, a gooder development, so to speak, as far as what would be necessary, for example, in assisted living facilities. So these, this design was sort of mimicked or mirrored off of other examples that we had looked at and submitted to this board when we were talking more about the FAR question or discussion. So that, that's, you know, again, it really relates to the windows, but this is again, allowing for a better, you know, building design or development program over the, the more heavily constrained 80% limitation where it would be a 75-foot setback.
Yeah, I just wanted to know the thinking behind it. That's all. Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else or? All right. Nice, guys.
Thank you.
Move on to anybody else who would like to comment? You don't have to be on video. I will run you. You can, you can just go audio if you like. Larry, what was the reminder for the dial-in folks that hits?
It's star nine.
Star nine, if you want to raise your hand, if you're one of the two phone-in callers. I feel like this is a really bad radio show at the call-in booth. We have, Peter is raising his hand, Larry.
Yep. Let me just, yeah, okay, go ahead. Okay.
Hey, Peter, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Good.
So looking at those drawings, I'd just like to point out that it shows how enormous this proposed building is compared with any of the surrounding residential buildings, how much it covers the lot in the zoning proposal that is given the rationale of increasing open space or preserving open space. I had done these diagrams. And when I brought them in, I noticed someone had a diagram, this drawing or something similar to was there. And it's much worse than the diagrams that I had prepared to show how huge the building was and how out of scale it is. And I just wanted to also point out that those photographs that supposedly show that the screening covers the building are completely, are very deceiving. You see that gray building hovering above the foliage and it gives you in the, in the, in the renderings, and it gives you a sense of how enormous that building is going to be. And the site sections show how compared with the existing view from Broadway, it completely overwhelmed, it completely covers the mansion, which is not the case now. So you would not see that historic mansion. And it, it looms over it to an incredible degree from Broadway. That's my point about that presentation. And just as a quick other comment, I'm just asking and hoping that the board will respond to those three letters later on that were sent in and put on the agenda, you know, in detail, including one a simple question that I had asked. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Looks like we have a call-in person, Larry. They figured it out.
Hi, it's Patty Graubert.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good. I'm good. Just a quick question. I just wanted to understand how the pandemic is going to be considered in the proposal, given the fact that a long-term care facility is being contemplated. I know, you know, in the New York Times last week, it was, you know, I think everybody unfortunately is aware that about a third of the COVID-19 deaths have been linked to some long-term care facilities. And I know one of the considerations or issues is our emergency services. So just wanted to make sure that there was going to be some consideration on the impacts for the village and the ability to provide services both for the residents and the village. Thanks.
Sure. Yeah, the impact on emergency services will always be kind of the first consideration on anything. It's like Jennifer Friedman?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah, how are you, Jennifer?
Hi, I'm good, thanks. Good evening, everyone. Nice to kind of see you. So thank you for continuing this conversation. You've heard from me many times. I live up on Riverview. I'm one of the properties that abut the east, east and southeast edge of Abbot House. And several of my neighbors have also sent letters up and down. I'm 200 Riverview Road, but there were like four or five houses in a row near, near me that that, that abut that property. I actually had planned already to thank you for increasing the setbacks to the 75 feet. We all collectively appreciate that as homeowners, I actually take great exception to this statement that was just made by the prior speaker that said that the number of the feet setback that, that bigger is not better. Actually, we completely disagree with that. We do believe that the number of feet setback from our properties does make a substantial difference in the quality of our lives and in, you know, the, you know, we purchased homes that were on woods and, you know, whereas other residents of Riverview did purchase homes that were closer to current buildings and, and property that was already developed. Ours are not. And, and we absolutely appreciate the additional 25-feet setback. We feel that that's critical and, you know, very much encourage you to maintain that update and appreciated it when we saw that update. So thank you for that. And, you know, that is, that is absolutely our perspective. And in fact, we would anticipate and hope that there would be the additional setback as well as screening, that both in concert would most effectively preserve the, you know, the use and enjoyment of our property and the property of those abutting on, on the various edges. The, the screens that were previously shared by the prior speaker were all lower down and regarding strawberry, but obviously to remind you that there are many properties as you go farther up the street that are impacted as well. And by the way, of course, there are people who have contributed to this conversation that are on the other side, on the east sunny side, side, who also have their properties all aligning. There's probably another, I don't know, 10 to 15 properties. So and altogether, I think I counted previously something like 20 properties that would all be impacted, not just Strawberry Lane, as was indicated on that prior slide. I did want to ask a question. I did appreciate also the additional language regarding outdoor activity, which is something that several of us had asked about, had questions about and, you know, advocated for positions on. I, I thought that I read that there would be no amplified sound outdoors at all. And I want to clarify that that is in fact, correct. I understand there had been some debate around the idea of a temporary structure such as a tent and whether amplified sound inside of a tent would be considered indoor or outdoor activity. And of course, our position would be that there should be no outdoor amplified sound at all, irrespective of whether a tent is erected for an outdoor event such as a wedding or anything else. So I do have that question. And secondarily, regarding outdoor activity, I, I just wanted to clarify whether dining would be considered outdoor activity. And I believe that what I saw in the draft was that there was an endpoint of 9:00 PM on weeknights and 10:00 PM on weekends. If I'm not mistaken, I actually don't have it right in front of me because it was on my screen and now I'm looking at you on my screen. But I wanted to clarify that because dining, my understanding, really does the sounds carry, sounds of dining carry. You've got plates, you've got service, you've got, you know, things clanging, people talking. And so I wanted to clarify that dining would not be permitted based on this current draft as an outdoor activity.
Mary Ann, do you have to answer that one off the top of your head or?
Yeah, on the, on the ban on amplified music is, yes, it says no amplified music or amplified sounds are permitted outdoors. So, so that's an absolute ban on that. Tents, I don't know. That's a different set of things, my guess. I, I don't know how that's regulated. I don't believe. I don't know. I don't know how that's regulated. We can talk about tents. And then about no outdoor activity. Oh, yeah, whether, whether, whether dining outside is an outdoor activity? Yeah, I guess it is. I mean, I don't think we talked about that specifically, but I would say dining outdoors would be an outdoor activity. And probably those limits are, you know, after nine o'clock or 10 o'clock gets a little buggy. So probably it's not going to inhibit anything. I think, I think mainly we were thinking about, you know, weddings and parties and stuff like that. But I would say outdoor dining is an outdoor activity. If we wanted to change it to a loud dining, we could specify, I mean, we, we could specify that, but I, you know.
Right. From our standpoint, if we're residential, you know, we have homes and they're abutting this property, which by the way, there are these very loud beagles, which I'm sure those of you, I'm sure the mayor has heard about the beagles. They're very loud. They bark all the time and they're quite a distance away and we can hear them and all of our neighbors can hear them all around us on Riverview. So it's, the sound really does carry and particularly because of the slope, that if the sound is coming from up the slope, which is where most of this development would be, there's nothing blocking it for the sound traveling toward us. And so it, it does travel quite far, quite quickly. Irrespective of there being woods now, we hear the beagles loudly and we've complained a lot about the beagles. Anyway, so, so obviously our perspective would be that there should not be dining you know, as an outdoor activity after nine on weeknights. And I mean, frankly, we prefer earlier than 10 on weekends. So that would be a preference on our part. And just to reiterate regarding the tent, I understand that maybe it was in the working section, there was some debate about whether a tent constituted some kind of a temporary structure. So of course, from our standpoint, we would not want to hear amplified sound outdoors with the tent being some kind of an exception that, that wouldn't, that would be contrary to the residential nature of that area. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, those beagles are not mine.
No, they're definitely not. I know where they, they're coming from. It's, it's, yeah, the other side.
Yeah, I've had fireworks recently too, which hasn't been pleasant, but I think we figured out who that is as well. Great. Thanks, Jennifer. See you on the street. Anyone else raising their hands? Yep.
Hi, everyone. I don't know. I'm not seeing the video, so I guess you just had me on audio.
Yes. If you want to be on video, you can be on video, I believe.
Well, that's usually nicer for the listeners, but that's up to you.
It's up to you.
No, I don't have the control. I think the hostess.
I do, yeah. But if someone wants to be on video, we can put you on. So.
Might as well.
All right, hold on.
You just have to unmute again.
Unmute.
Yeah.
And.
Start video.
You have to start your video.
There we are. Okay. Boy, it looks dark behind me. So first, I, I, I'm glad to see all your faces and I wish that the board and everyone, I, I'm sure we all have people who are worrying about that you're healthy and your families and the people you care about are healthy. And I appreciate all the work the board's doing and try to keep our public spaces available to the community. I think that's the most important thing. We all need to get out and have a little mental health break and a walk in these days. You know, I'm listening to the zoning and I am appreciative of the noise changes, the setback changes, the, the restrictions that have been put on this property. But I have to tell you, I mean, as I hear this, I'm becoming more and more distraught about the idea of commercial space across the street for me. For those listening who don't know, my, my address is 39 Circle Drive, my driveway and my house runs it's sideways onto Strawberry Lane. So I'm sort of directly across the street from the Maxon property. You know, to Maxon's point, the setback of 75, if I need to change, trade that for less of a setback on Broadway, sure, there aren't any homes right next to the Broadway, but I don't know why I'm horse trading with the Maxon estate. You know, they, they had no expectation of anything on that property other than one non-conforming commercial use and a residential neighborhood. And I don't know why we aren't talking about houses. And now that I'm home in the year of COVID and I'm working from home and I'm here 24/7 in my house and I'm over 60 years old and I take a lot of precautions when I go out. And when I need to walk, I mostly walk the local streets. If I'm up for the exercise, I walk the hill up Riverview and back down. If I'm up for the exercise, I walk the hill up River View and back down. If I want something milder, I walk around Meadowbrook and Fargo. And I appreciate that our town is, is homes and quiet and the azaleas are out and it's beautiful. And none of these restrictions are going to give me that across the street. We're talking about a boutique hotel, an assisted living, 100 people living there, noise not abated till nine o'clock. I mean, right now I hear the dumpster at Maxon. When they show up at four in the morning, when my windows are closed, never mind in the summer, and it takes them 45 minutes to collect all of the dumpsters. I just can't imagine how different it will be if there's commercial development there. This isn't anything that the, your townspeople are asking for. Your town is asking you to keep it residential and I don't know why the board isn't considering keeping it residential. So that's been my request from the beginning. I am someone who knew about these hearings early on. I've come to most of these. In the era of a pandemic, my, my views have, have become even more so. I have to say that I appreciate the benefits of a residential community and a residential street. I bought my home 25 years ago in an area that was zoned residential with one non-conforming use, a quiet office building that had a little bump in traffic at nine in the morning and five in the evening, nothing on weekends and evenings, no noise, no need for light abatement, none of those issues. And I'm really going to be devastated that it changes and for the worse. I'm stuck here now. I can't go anywhere. So that's all I have to say. I agree with the more specific points in Peter's letter. I think, you know, he has more of a handle on the real estate and some of the technical aspects and I appreciate him diving into the research and I support that 100%. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, it's definitely not your last chance to, you know, be heard on this issue. Continue to send your letters. I will actually move on to the letters now. Let's pull those up here. Let's see. The first letter is from Alexander Hernandez. I don't think we, I know we haven't heard from him and his is, he's on his own, so he'd only recently, this is back in February now, so it's not recent anymore, but he'd only recently heard about the mixed zoning proposal. He reads comprehensive plan and each of the very limited survey responses laid at Broadway Carter, only 49, if I'm little, if any consensus of support. Basically, most of his letter talks about how the surveys that were done as part of the comprehensive plan don't really have enough, have enough data to support the changes. He talks about how the proposal expansion of bulk density and use is completely out of character with the neighboring area. 100% of the borders of the properties to be rezoned above residential districts and approximately 85% of those bordering lots are rezoned, I have 20 or more restricted. No clear support for prominent uses included in the proposal, only four respondents, this is referring back to the comprehensive plan survey, only four respondents, 8% suggested assisted living should be permitted in the area, only one, 2% suggested hotel use, that these use are pronounced in the proposal. What is clear, the survey respondents had consistent desires to the area remain much as is now in appearance. Is displeased with the board's lack of direct engagement with both my neighborhood and those others surrounding the properties proposed to be rezoned to a date given what is at stake. What has become clear to me is I've communicated to the community members that virtually no stakeholders, residents are aware of the proposal being considered. I would actually, this is not in the letter, this is my sidebar, I would take great, I would disagree with that strongly. I think there's been a lot of people involved in this. Of those few who are aware, most don't understand it, I'm yet to find a single resident supportive of it. As such, I like to propose to probably consider adopting certified mailing standard to those residents in the 500 feet of the property, subject to proposal for zoning modification, meaning scope for change use. I think that's pretty much it. I'll go on to the next one, which is, this is actually from Peter, so I don't know if we should read it again. I think he went over most of it. I know he wanted answers to those. We will, we will work on getting answers to those. And then there's the longer letter, which refers to the change that our petition in 270 Irving residents opposed many elements proposed NBMD zoning. Unless you may convince that this rezoning would harm our North Irvington community and quality of life, most urgent residents sacrificing Irvington small town character, creating a new non-central business district and giving us enough to nothing in return. Blows wide, traffic and noise created by new commercial institutional uses, strain on IVAX, IVAC tax revenue. At the work session, the boards clarified that not-for-profit uses are generally exempt from property taxes and the payments are typically small and fully voluntary. Legal continues special permit on payment of a pilot session. The board declined to limit senior living facilities for, for profit tax limities as a change that our petition requested. Evidently legal, as it was done in practice matter, development of one or more senior living facilities in NBMD significantly reduce urgent tax base. Bulk, the board has stated the NBMD zoning benefits, benefits everything because it preserves open space to comparison with single family development and it widens the Broadway buffer. Contrary, the first claim, allowable building coverage under NBMD zoning is higher than for residential development on the current zoning. Maxon site, which is the greatest difference, would be 19.5 or MBMD zoning and less than 11.3 for residents under current zoning. Talks about gross floor area, the huge buildings or groups of buildings a lot of other, under the new zoning would be out scale. The widened Broadway buffer would have a little public benefit because of the slope of the Maxon and 90 North Broadway sites would cause huge buildings to bloom over the neighborhood, the ground level about 40 feet higher than Broadway and to block the view of the open space behind them. Detached one-family dwellings, board members have refused to allow detached one-family dwellings in NBMD zone because they're an outside reach of affordable housing requirements. Mayor Smith said that single family houses on Wintaker last recall for two to $4 million homes, which he said are now selling this time. In response, everything to raise many garden apartments as well as other affordable dwelling units and are close to Main Street. Those code require percentage of affordable housing units, multifamily developments, we understand the villages to be compliance, villages to be in compliance with Westchester consent decree in the subject. NBMD zoning offers incentives for affordable housing, form increased floor area. In our view, to outlaw detached one-family homes, earnings most common housing type is to, is in order to encourage affordable housing is being overblown. Respect to Mr., Mr., to Mayor Smith's observation about current housing market is not the function of zoning resolution for a forever housing type and might not be economically feasible. It's kind of funny that they quote me because I'm the only one who wanted to include it, but that's okay. Conclusion, alternate proposal. In case the board wants to establish, establish new mixed-use district, we propose all used to be allowed, all used to allow in the both NBMD district except for the following, attached three or more family dwellings and new structures, there'd be a lot of existing store structures, senior living facilities, this is the except for us, boutique hotels, conference centers, annual for-profit membership clubs, bed and breakfast establishments. That says in the for-profit membership club, that's admitted to preserve the tax base. I think that that's, for-profit membership clubs are taxable, like I know RZ Country Club is. This remains in current historical uses, called for comprehensive plan, only such uses. Maintain minimum lot requirements at 40,000 square feet, however, in order to encourage large open spaces, especially along Broadway, a formula could be established where as a mixture of uses could exist in a single family lot. Floor area, building and lot coverage, open space, regulate mothers' uses, incentives for preservation of historical structures can be retained but shall be smaller proposed for the NBMD district. If possible, regulate floor area for institutional uses, places of worship, schools, museums, so that you close your way of your lot for commercial industrial uses. I don't know if we necessarily do that, but then there's, I didn't count the signatures, but there are about a third of a page and then a full page. So those were the, the three letters that we received. Switch back to meeting. There it is.
Peter, Peter's asked to talk.
Okay.
Yeah, a second. Okay.
Quick clarification, it was not-for-profit membership clubs, which is in the allowable uses, and I suggest that's not to be, because not-for-profits, to my understanding, are not taxable.
Correct, but I think it said for, I thought it said for profits, but.
No, it says not for profits. That's all.
Okay, I mean, that's why I'm happy to change to for profits, because things like religious institutions, you can't stop anyway, so.
Great.
That's one change, Mary Ann. That's indeed what it is. I always thought it was for-profit membership clubs, I always thought of country clubs or something like, you know, the, the membership clubs in the city. Thank you, Peter. All right, well, obviously we're keeping public hearing open, so if you wanted to speak tonight, but you couldn't figure out Zoom, you have at least until June 1st to figure it out, and we'll have more meetings after that, I'm sure. So we will keep the public hearing open and move on to our next item, which is approval of an intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County for radio replacement project. Want to give us some background on that, Larry?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. It's a, you know, an agreement with Westchester County. They will be providing certain equipment to us. We have certain obligations back. I don't believe there's a cost to this, but we have other, you know, obligations back that all seem reasonable. Mary Ann's reviewed it from the standpoint of, an agreement standpoint, and all seems to be in order. So it's a lot of, a lot of pages, but everything seems to be in order. And they're, and they're anxious to move on. It affects our, all three of our emergency services, police, fire and ambulance.
Okay. I'm just scrolling through here, hang on one second. Almost there. I have to figure out Zoom before the next meeting as well. Resolve to approve the intermunicipal agreement with the county of Westchester for the radio replacement project to enhance the emergency service communication systems used by the fire EMS, public safety, answering points and hospitals in the county and to authorize the village administrator to execute the agreement. I'll make a motion if I, I can have a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is a, a word of contract for tree removal, tree pruning and stump grinding.
Again, this is a fairly regular contract that we do. I, I don't think we do it every year. We do it biannually. We usually extend it for a year if everything's going well. So this is our year to bid it out. The low bidder in fairly competitive bidding was Care of Trees, which is the current contractor that we're using, when everyone's satisfied with their work and the prices are obviously competitive.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty far down. If you want, I can outline the, the resolution for you.
I'm actually, I think I'm still going through the intermunicipal agreement on my screen.
Yeah, it's a lot of pages, I know.
I think I got it now. I'm ready, I'm ready to read now. Everyone, if anyone has any questions. Whereas sealed bids were received and opened on May 6, 2020 at 11 AM in Village Hall as follows. Care of trees, annual cost of one unit 51,000, annual cost for emergency basis 11,400, annual cost of a stump grinder 4,600, total cost 67,000. Emerald tree and truck care, the total cost of 78,900. Alstead tree and truck care, $81,000. Whereas the village administrator reviewed the bid submitted and determined that the lowest bidder is in order responsive to the specifications, now therefore be it resolved that the village administrator is authorized to execute a purchase contract for tree removal, tree pruning and stump grounding with the care of trees ink for the unit prices specified. I'll make a motion if I can have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up is the award of contract for miscellaneous hardware and supplies.
Yeah, same thing. Again, something that we bid out on a regular basis. And there are actually three bidders and we are awarding contracts to all three on the terms that they submitted them under. Each of them, we want to have the flexibility to purchase things when they're available from the locations that they're available. So each has their own items that are, that can be available and we want to use them all if we can.
Very good. Any questions on this? Whereas sealed bids were received and opened on May 6, 2020 at 11 AM in Village Hall as follows. Irvington hardware, 10% discount on one-by-one basis, 10% on case bulk quantity, special pricing for products purchased in pallet form and not generally stock. Reader's true value hardware, 30% off paint, 20% off remainder of items. Hill tie ink, 40% off tools and 45% off accessories. Whereas the village administrator reviewed the bids submitted and determined that the bidders are in order and responsive to the specifications, now therefore be it resolved. The village administrator is authorized to execute a purchase contract for miscellaneous hardware and supplies with each of the suppliers on the terms outlined above. I'll make a motion if I can have a second. All in favor? Next is award of contract for auto parts.
Well, this is the same thing. Yeah, go, go right ahead. But again, we are awarding, you know, to the multiple vendors for the same reason as, as before.
Very good. Whereas sealed bids were received and opened on May 6, 2020 at 11 AM in Village Hall as follows. Companies Reds Auto and Truck Parts, discount 5%. Schultz Ford Lincoln, list less 30%, engines and transmissions costs, cost plus 12% for Lincoln, Ford Lincoln parts only. IEH Auto Parts LLC doing business is auto parts plus auto parts. They get no points for names. Reference price less 61%. Whereas the village administrator reviewed the bid submitted and determined that all bids are responsive to the specifications, and whereas the central garage needs to purchase parts for a variety of different vehicle makes and models, says things of the designation of multiple suppliers, now therefore be it resolved that the village administrator is authorized to execute a purchase contract for auto parts with each of the suppliers and the terms outlined above. I will make a motion if I can have a second. All in favor? Word of contract for use and operation of heavy equipment. You want to say?
Okay, yeah, yeah. So actually, yeah, this, this is a little different this year. So this is for, you know, equipment such as, you know, excavators and loaders and dump trucks and other excavating work that we do a lot, an awful lot of. We did, we did a bid, we had received two, both of them are, are in order. The actual low bid was Tom Bucci excavating by about $1,500. We would like to have a secondary contractor available to us, not just for emergencies, but when the need arises that we may have multiple projects that need to get done. And so we, we are designating Tom Bucci and doing a contract with his firm as the primary contractor, but on a secondary basis, we will also be using Carl Dibble Inc. And he has agreed to sign a contract for the identical unit prices as Tom Bucci. So that's why the, the resolved clause here reads that the contract is for the same price, but the intention, and it's been made clear to both, both bidders, the intention is that Tom Bucci will be the primary contractor with Carl Dibble as secondary.
Very good. Any questions on this? Whereas two bids were received for contract 2020-12 for the use and operation of heavy equipment as follows. Tom Bucci excavating, bid complete, it was complete, for a total bid of $106,250. Carl Dibble Inc. also complete bid for $107,950. Whereas the village administrator reviewed the bid submitted and determined that both bids are responsive to the specifications and resolved to award contract 2012, 2020-12 for the use and operation of heavy equipment in the amount of $106,250. To Tom Bucci excavating and Carl Dibble Inc. and to authorize the village administrator execute said contract. I'll make a motion if I can have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Next is the presentation of the annual stormwater report, Larry?
Salary modifications?
No, that's, the, what's not attached, I tried, I tried to save, I tried to save a little bit of real estate here on, on your agenda packet. Yeah, exactly. I'm sure that you're all familiar with the stormwater report. I was going to display it briefly just to refresh your memory. I can if you'd like, but I'll quickly take it down. Let's see here. I think you'll recognize this.
So more streets cleaned, more.
Yeah.
And culverts cleaned out and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, exactly. So this is the report that I know longtime board members are very familiar with this. This is a report that we're, we are required to file with the New York State DEC. The report reports on the activities of the village as it relates to our stormwater management. So it ranges from areas such as public education, you know, say like through our, especially electronic means, email lists, some cleanup events that we have throughout the year. And, and that's one particular measure that they look at. And then there are other. And, and that's one particular measure that they look at. And then there are other measures such as looking, looking for illicit discharges. You know, where we will look at outflows of stormwater, and if we see evidence of, you know, a chemical or, or some sort of staining, or an oil slick, for example, that may show off a sheen. You know, we would investigate those, those illicit discharges. So we report on those activities in this, in this, what I always call a very sterile-looking report. And so, you know, this is, this is an example. It's just, it's data. You know, we, we have, we report how many people are on our mailing lists, and how many people are connected to our social media accounts, and we report how many mailings we may have done, or, you know, emails that would have qualified for stormwater education. So it really is a fairly routine report these days. And then the final area that we report on is what are municipal operations? What, what the statistics are for our municipal operations in terms of how many, how many times we send the street sweeper out to, to clean the road so that the debris doesn't get into the catch basins? How many times we sweep our parking lots? We measure how much debris they accumulate and how much we dispose of. We measure that and report how much that is. So it's a, again, a very data-driven report. This report will be posted online because I'm sure there's some people that would like to read it very closely, but most, most don't, and you know, we will be sending it up to the New York State DEC by the end of the month. And historically, we have a location, if you search for stormwater on our, on our website, there's a location where you have all past past annual reports that are, that are displayed there. That's it.
So Larry, I'd just like to make a comment to the general populace, residents, and audience that it's important that everyone who has a stream running adjacent or through their property to keep it cleaned out of debris and keep the water flowing as naturally as possible. Debris, I mean, you know, garbage, branches, any number of things, tricycles, dead bodies, whatever. But the key is that we're coming up to hurricane season, believe it or not. There was a tropical depression already recorded in the Atlantic, so it's kind of early this year. But it's at these times that we want to keep the water flowing cleanly, cleanly and quickly, so there's not, reduces the risks of flooding.
Any other questions from the board, or?
Were there any spills this year of any sort that were?
No, no, not, not during this year, which ended March 9th, actually. The, coincidentally, today I had a conversation with the village inspector who was, was at a site and observed something that they want to follow up on, you know, just some, some, you know, downspout that was letting water run out and looked to be a little bit not so clean. So he's going to be looking at that. But that's exactly what that section of our law provides for, is, is to have a mechanism to enforce and to follow up on those types of discharges.
Thank you.
And, and when it happens, we report on it. All right. Brian, I think that's, that's it. There's nothing to vote on. It's just a
Presentation.
Presentation.
Fantastic. I guess now we can move on to salary modifications for non-union staff.
So the salary modifications that are presented here are, are all at two percent, which is the the rate of the most recently settled CSEA contract for the upcoming year. There are a few exceptions that are mostly steps for employees going from, from one step to another, but besides that, it's, it's a two percent. And these are non-union. I'm sorry.
Did the board members get a raise?
Let me look. No. But you have the power, though, so. You can change it any way you want, although I, I never researched how long it's been. I, I think it dates back at least to the eighties that the salary's been the same. May even be earlier. It's certainly been the time that I've been on the board, but I think it was, it was, I know it was, it doubled at one point, maybe from the seventies to the eighties, it doubled. But anyway, we're all here for the money, anyway. Yeah. So I'm going to.
Brian, sorry, and the fame.
And the fame, very true. And we get, you know, we get to be panelists on the Zoom call, which not everyone gets to do, except if they ask. Resolve to modify the annual salaries and hourly rates effective on the date shown below. There's effective June 1st, 2020, all of those. And I think they're all effective June 1st, but as, as detailed in the attachment is what I'll add. I'll make the motion if I can have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Appointment of part-time laborer for Eighty-Six Main Street.
Okay, so yeah, the, the recommendation is that we, we're recommending that we hire Joe Galano, who many know, Joe, Joe from the hardware store, as it turns out. And he is taking on the role of managing on a day-to-day basis Eighty-Six Main Street, which, as you know, is a commercial residential rental building, and will be in that mode for at least a couple of years, if not a little bit longer. And so he'll be managing it day-to-day. He will check in on the building daily. He'll attend to any problems there may be. He'll take phone calls from the tenants if there are problems, especially in the middle of the night, where things can happen with heat and other things. He will do some light repairs. Repairs that he can't do. He'll bring in the village's contractor, you know, say, electrical, electrical plumbing repair. He'll bring in, you know, one of the village's contractors, obviously communicating with us the entire time. But basically, he'll, he'll take care of this building as a property manager. May even, may even, may even collect the rent once in a while, too, for us. I'm kidding.
In the right spot. Certainly in the close location.
Yeah, and he, he obviously knows all the, all the players in town in terms of bringing in people to take care of anything that has to be done.
Good idea.
Perfect. I'll to make the calling appointment of the Department of Public Works, Joseph M. Galano, laborer part-time, five hundred dollars a month, twenty hours per month, effective May 18th, 2020. I'll make the motion if I can have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Larry, next one?
Yeah, next one's.
Approval consultant retainer with Stephen Dewey?
Yeah, so, so yeah, this is the other, the other piece of the puzzle, which is Mr. Dewey will be providing services to us as needed as it relates to any landlord tenant issues. So this is an area of his specialty. And we want to get in the mode of, of being able to hand off any of those landlord tenant issues, which, as you know, are, I'm certainly not an experienced person in being a landlord, so, and I'm, and I'm pretty sure Mary Ann didn't want to take that section of law on either, so. It's quite a specialty, from what it seems. So this gentleman came highly recommended by our property acquisition attorney, Phil Mondello. Phil, we asked Phil if he would like to do it, and he's trying to wind some things down, not taking on extra work like this, but he highly recommended Mr. Dewey to do this. And that's what you have.
Yeah, I do think I'll regret it for the rest of my life if I don't ask if he works for Dewey Cheatem and how.
That was a softball, yes. I, you had to, you had to hit that one.
I did. I apologize to everyone for the dad joke. Any questions on this, other than my, your name ones? I think it's a good idea, Larry. And I will read it. Resolve to improve the retainer agreement, twenty twenty dash thirteen with Stephen P. Dewey, Esquire PC for legal services related, relative to landlord tenant matters regarding Eighty-Six Main Street, Arlington, New York, and authorized the village administrator to execute said contract. I'll make the motion if I can have a second. All in favor? Aye. Next up, report of the boards, standing committees, and officers. Trustee liaison reports. I guess we'll start with you, Mark.
Yeah, not much to report, but with the revised guidelines from the governor's office, it looks like landscaping is now an accepted activity, again, not just maintenance, but anything, including cosmetic and, and new, new activity. And also, as I was telling Larry, I've seen an upswing in the number of landscape trucks and the number of tree crews out around the area. And that's also reflected in the fact that permits are coming into the tree commission at this point, again.
Yeah, and we're going to work on a way to make sure we can address those and have the, have the tree commission be able to review those safely going forward. I don't, shouldn't, shouldn't be that difficult, but we haven't, we haven't gotten to that point yet. Maybe this week.
Well, it's hard to have a Zoom meeting to see a tree.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we just need to make sure that, you know, everyone is equipped properly and, you know, we weren't in a position to do that six weeks ago, as you know, but now we're much better off.
Are you allowed to get six feet, less than six feet next to a tree? I guess that's okay, right? You're not going to catch the virus from the tree.
I think a tree is okay.
You gotta wait, watch out for squirrels, though. Those, those guys are pretty dangerous.
I've, I've seen some with masks, though, so it's okay. And the raccoons, also.
They have plausible thumbs, too, so. Doc?
Really, nothing new, just a reminder again to, to please try to follow rules in the parks, masks, and social distancing particularly.
Can I add to your report, Larry?
Sure.
So we are still actively working on trying to find a way to open up the tennis courts. It's not easy. Sounds easy, but it's not easy because people don't always follow the rules, so we have to work on that. And second of all, we will be making a decision at the latest by Friday on the day camps. So there's, there's a
No pressure on anybody about that.
No, well, we, we, we have a meeting set up with the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee on Thursday, so I expect the decision on Friday.
And I know there's a RAPS meeting tomorrow, I think, where it's going to get discussed.
Yeah, we're gathering all sorts of information, and none of it's good.
State's waiting for the county, county's waiting for the state, the department is waiting for everyone.
No, one of the things we've learned along here, and we talked about it at the last work session, is that if you're waiting for, in, in many cases, if you're waiting for higher levels of government to make the decision, that, that they don't, the decisions don't come. You need to make your decisions on your own, and you know, you try to be at least in line with other levels of government, but no one's going to make the decision for you, so.
Thanks, Larry. Johnny?
Uh, I don't, no, I don't really have any reports.
Okay. Chad?
Yeah, very briefly, the fire department, Marine Four is back in service, which is very good news, and it's stocked in Tarrytown at the moment. The department has responded to a couple of calls involving COVID-19, but with full PPE precautions, and the staff continues to engage in online training during this period. Library, maybe one of the most active departments. Totally digital. They've had over almost twenty-four hundred page view, double their normal usage last month. Downloadable resources also flourishing. The eight-eight ebooks, audiobooks were downloaded, offered two new streaming services, Acorn TV and Kellow concerts, and programs online, young children's storytime, music programs, and a book discussion group for fourth and fifth grader, greatest through eighty-four children, accompanied by sixty adults. Additional weekly storytimes, one adult lecture in April about Fierro LaGuardia, and more lectures are planned. So we are, they are working towards being as fully digital now and looking for ways that we can begin to offer actual books, audiobooks, and movies to the patrons before that happens. So this is a community resource that is still very available. Check the website.
Janice, did you say that Acorn TV is now available?
Yes.
On, on which service?
Oh, you're getting way beyond my technological ability here. Check, if you check the website, I'm sure it tells you. They were, one hundred and sixty-eight TV episodes were watched, so it's working. Just go to the library website, and it's, it'll be a link.
I will do that. It has great stuff.
I got one of the great courses through that. It's, it's wonderful. It's all free, stuff you would ordinarily have to pay for.
So Mark started off talking about squirrels, and there's no acorns. I like it.
Not intentional.
Yeah, whatever. I see a pattern at all. I just like to spot patterns. Village administrators report.
So two quick things. First is that with, with the help of a bunch of people, Brenda included, and, and some of our department heads, we did file a, an application for FEMA assistance today. It's the first of our applications. It runs through about April 19th. And the amount was about forty thousand dollars. We, it covers the emergency food response that's going on with our seniors, as well as the personal protective equipment that we've been engaged in acquiring. So we'll see how that goes. It was kind of a trial balloon to see if it works, especially on the food side. And the other thing is that the Station Road project is ongoing, and maybe I'll turn it over to Larry to tell me how wonderful it's going, right?
I think they're doing a good job.
Yeah, I think so, so far. The complaints have been fairly minimal. You know, they seem to be pretty conscientious and courteous.
As long as they don't use leaf blowers, Larry.
No, they assured me that they would not be used, and they, and they also assured me that they don't start before eight o'clock, so. Larry can confirm or deny that, too.
True, no, it's true.
Good.
And they've been there every day.
Yeah.
So, you know, we all have a schedule.
Good. That's it.
Village clerk treasurer's report?
Everything is status quo. We're preparing our tax bills to be mailed after next weekend.
Very good. Village attorney's report?
I don't have one.
Public comment? Otherwise, we'll go to review of action items. Didn't really have anything.
I don't think so, no.
I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got it, really adjourned.
So I think we have time to meet with Mary Ann briefly?
Sure.
Yes, okay, so I'll end this meeting, and we'll meet with Mary Ann separately. Yes.
Different log, correct?
Yeah. It was in, it was in the email.
Another email. There was a second email.
Correct. Yeah.
It came late this afternoon.
Correct. Yes. You responded to it, Mark.
The one that I threw out.
Great.
Check, check your trash bin.
All right, good night, everyone.
Bye.
Good night, good night, Brenda.
Good night.